Please, Madam Clerk.
Supervisor Boone?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Here.
Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Stevens?
Here.
And if I could ask everybody to please stand for an invocation by Supervisor Boone, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Supervisor Baines.
Heavenly Father, thank you today for giving us the opportunity to be with these blessed people. We acknowledge your presence in our minds and seek your guidance for our time together. Lord, we ask your blessing and the work here today behind the dais and what lies ahead. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Supervisor Boone and Supervisor Baines.
Ladies and gentlemen, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and if we could just take, please remain standing. If we can have one moment of silence for Officer Rodarte from the city of Marysville. Okay, please be seated. Thank you. And if I could ask supervisors to join me up front for four presentations today.
Well, Michelle Blake with the Children's and Family Commission, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 5th through the 11th, 2025 as Week of the Young Child.
Come on up, team. Whole team's coming up. All right. Just moving over. Okay, awesome. You got your whole team here, Michelle. This is great. Week of the Young Child, April 5th through the 11th, 2025. Sutter County is home to over 7,000 children aged birth through five, a time when a child's brain undergoes its most rapid development, setting the stage for all future learning. Wow, 7,000, that's like 7% of the whole population, huh? Just good math. I'm good at math. High-quality, high-quality early care and education help build strong developmental foundations for young children during the years of most significant brain development, leading to positive outcomes for individual children and helping them be better prepared for school and more likely to succeed in life. Over the past 25 years, the Sutter County Children's and Families First Commission has been at the forefront, supporting early childhood services, advocating for policy change, supporting the professional capacity of providers, serving thousands of families, and investing over $26 million in local community, in the local community. It is essential to recognize and support the people, programs, and policies committed to high-quality, early childhood education and care. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors call upon all citizens of Sutter County to recognize and celebrate the potential of our youngest residents during the Week of the Young Child and to continue supporting efforts that provide high-quality, early care and education, ensuring that every child in our community has the opportunity to thrive and to succeed. So, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Thank you. The Honorable Chair, Flores, and members of the board, on behalf of Sutter County Children and Families Commission, thank you for recognizing the Week of the Young Child. This proclamation reflects the importance of investing in our youngest residents and honoring the critical role that our families, our early educators, and our community members play in helping children to thrive. So, every day, our team that you see before you here works endlessly to ensure that children in Sutter County have the opportunities to grow up healthy, safe, and ready to learn. So, we are truly grateful for your continued support and for standing with us in commitment to give every child in our community a strong start. Thank you very much with appreciation.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, Sarah Eberhart Rios with Sutter County Health and Human Services, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April 7th through the 13th, 2025 as National Public Health Week.
Come on up here. Hi there. Who's holding the, Leah's gonna hold the plaque there. There you go. All right. We're all set. Your team's here too, huh? Okay, great. One, the team of one. I like it. They're all here. The whole team's here, right? The American Public Health Association has declared the Week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025 as National Public Health Week. Since 1995, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has shared information with the public, policymakers, and public health professionals about issues important to improving the public's health. Public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the health sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials, and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. They help communities prevent, prepare, for, and withstand, and recover from the impact of natural disasters and disasters caused by human activity such as chemical spills. Preventable risk factors such as physical inactivity, nutritional deficiencies, tobacco use, and excessive alcohol use are leading causes of chronic disease. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaim the Week of April 7th through 13th, 2025 as National Public Health Week and call upon the people of Sutter County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand the value of public health. So, I'm gonna hand this over to you, Leah, for a few words.
Great. Thank you so much. And just on behalf of all the public health staff and all our partners and the community at large, just really appreciate recognizing National Public Health Week, and thank you for all of your support. We really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Will Maria Rodriguez with Casa de Esperanza, please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month?
The tragedy of child abuse and neglect affects every community in California and touches the lives of far too many citizens regardless of cultural, ethnic, religious, or socioeconomic level. The threat to our children's welfare is demonstrated by steady increases in the number and the seriousness of reported cases of child abuse and neglect. If our children are to be productive adults, they should have the right to a childhood free from neglect, physical abuse, sexual molestation, and exploitation. It is recognized that primary prevention programs designed to work with children's, the children themselves, their parents, and caregivers within the community are successful in preventing first-time abuse situations. The observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month provides an excellent opportunity for all citizens to reflect on this tragic crime while rededicating themselves to taking an active role in child abuse prevention activities in their community. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month with the theme "It Takes a Village" and emphasizes the importance of community involvement in preventing child abuse and neglect. With that, I'm going to ask Maria to say a few words.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for the recognition. And on behalf of Casa staff, we're very appreciative of the continual support that you all provide. And we get to do what we do, and it's a pleasure to do it.
And thank you for the great work that you guys do. Stay for a photo. Thank you, Maria.
Will Maria Rodriguez, please remain up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month?
You have to come up with a second speech, Maria. Here you go. Thank you. All right. Welcome back. Sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person, a victim or survivor, a family member, a significant other, a neighbor or a coworker, a victim or survivor. Casa de Esperanza has led the way in addressing sexual assault by providing 24-hour hotline services to victims and survivors and their significant others, responding to emergency calls, offering support and comfort to those impacted by sexual assault during medical exams, criminal proceedings, and empowering those impacted by sexual assault to chart their own course for healing. Staff and volunteers of sexual assault programs work year-round to support survivors by providing prevention, education, and survivor empowerment information to schools, churches, civic organizations, as well as medical, mental health, law enforcement, education, and criminal justice personnel regarding sexual assault issues. Casa de Esperanza has set an important example of how foregoing collaborative relationships between service agencies and organizations improves the quality of service for those, for those most profoundly and directly impacted by sexual violence. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors, in recognition of the important work done by sexual assault programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, hereby proclaim the month of April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Together we act united, we change. By standing in solidarity, we can build a future free from sexual violence and create a world where everyone is safe, valued, and respected. Maria, you are back on.
Again, I wanna, I just want to say thank you for the recognition. It really is through the support that we get to do what we do and assist in the ways that we're able to. You guys all mean a lot, just being here and providing the efforts that you do.
Thank you. Let's give Maria a round of applause. Thank you, Maria. Okay, I'm gonna make a statement about public comment. Members of the public will be allowed to address the board with respect to items listed on the agenda only. The law requires that business not appearing on the agenda may not be discussed at special, at a special meeting. Correct? Do we have any public comment?
We have one public comment from Tony Farley.
Okay. Mr. Farley, Mrs. Farley?
Tony Farley, south side of Sutter County, Southeast City. Yeah, Officer Rodarte, I missed him. I was crying when Steve Smith dropped out the group home. I was crying. Like, Officer was very young. He's like 25, I believe. He's old. I'm 30, so we're both young, youngster, young cadets, young rookie, rookie. It's depressing. So, I was crying. The sirens were like bagpipes to me. That's the one, hear the sirens, might say the bagpipes, but emergency vehicle version of the sirens. Here are the fire trucks, the ambulances, the police cars, ecology, the FBI, DA was there, military, Air Force Base was there. It was depressing. It's ridiculous. A drug game banger terrorist plus a registered offender killed a heroic officer. If I become governor of California, passing laws, make a felony, make a death penalty, make a, all three strikes, a death penalty, then we kill a first responder over narcotics. I'm against, I'm against marijuana, I'm against weed, I'm against cocaine, I'm also against that fentanyl bull crap. I'm against that stuff. Fentanyl, tried to kill me one time, the Caliber guy, tried to kill me in New York County meeting with the fentanyl stuff. So, hopefully I become governor, I'm passing laws, make a death penalty for any offense involving drugs and killing a first responder, clean police officers. You can't kill the officer, you can't kill them. It's a felony. In Texas, it's all my death penalty killing law for the officer. In China, dealing drugs is a death penalty. So, hopefully, America, my, my, California governor, I'm passing laws, make tough on crime. Daryl Gates, LAPD says, kick his off drugs, just say no, just say no. No more drugs. Keep on Daryl Gates. So, thank you for service, Jeff Boongard, thank you for service, Matt Conan, the Carmen Baines, thank you for service, Star Wars guy, they probably miss Farley, I like that. Jeff's, Jeff's, Stephen Farmhouse, thank you for a pumpkin pie. And Max Zigamire, my honker versus your sour Huskies, my honker cheerleader versus your Husky cheerleaders. And Sarah Rios from Southern California, love you, Sarah. And Deborah, Deborah's back. Give a round of applause for Deborah. Deborah's back. Welcome back, Deborah. Yeah. And Steve Smith, Professor Steve Smith, from Harvard Kennedy School Law, Harvard Kennedy School Government, Harvard Kennedy School, Professor Steve. And Colonel Scott Hanson, the Colonel. I keep calling Colonel, he's Colonel. And the Capitol Corrections and the Young Deputy are there. Yeah. And Cycle B, say, applause for Cycle B, it's Cycle B here. And also the, yeah.
Take care. All right, moving on now to consent calendar. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial, for which prior policy direction has been given to staff and that require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option or upon request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. So, entertain a motion. Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Zigamire, a second by Supervisor Stevens. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire? Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. The consent calendar carries. We'll move now to the appearance items. The clerk will announce the appearance items.
Update on Workday Enterprise Resource Planning.
Ooh, we got the team coming in. I can't.
That's right. Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and Board Members, Ken Sra, General Services Director. Like you said, the team's all here. We're gonna give you a Workday update, and we promise we'll keep it brief. Okay, so can we go to the next slide here? Okay, so Workday, what is it? It's an ERP system. What does an ERP system do? It runs the business of an organization. It manages our two most important things, our people and our money. And then, also notably, ERP projects, they're the most difficult and complex systems to implement for any organization. Next slide. So, talking about like the decision points we made along this journey to get to Workday. First of all, we had to change, right? The old system wasn't supported. It was no longer viable. The company itself was in question because they had zero resources. So, beyond that, we also had to be very proactive. We had to move quickly because we didn't want the county to be in a situation where the old software had a catastrophic failure, and then the county's dead in the water, and we have no options. But along this pathway, you know, the executive committee, we really didn't want to do more of the same. So, we didn't want to just replace the old system with something that was just, you know, just a moderate improvement over what we were doing. We really wanted something that was like the best in class. So, we also didn't want to endure like another six-to-seven-year project. Wanted to get things done quickly. And then, you know, with a six-to-seven-year project, you've implemented a system, and it's already outdated by the time you go live. So, we didn't want to be limited by that kind of technology. The timing was really perfect for us. We had one-time funding. The executive committee all was in consensus that Workday was the choice to move forward. And then I'll just give you like a quick overview of the timeline. So, the board, your board approved the project July 2022. We did some pre-work activities, including the Auditor Controller's Office and CIO's Office. They really revamped the financial data model, changed the chart of accounts, really modernized it. And then we actually kicked off the project in February of 2023, and we went live in April of 2024. So, you're looking at basically a 14-month implementation, which is unheard of. So, that's kudos to the project team for all their hard work. So, you might be thinking, okay, what's so great about Workday, right? So, you don't have to take our word for it. It's used by half the Fortune 500. It's used by over 230 public sector organizations. And you can see by that list there, it's quickly becoming the standard for California counties. And the thing I want to mention about that group of California counties that are using Workday or are implementing it and are going to be using it is that group is gonna grow. It's gonna pay dividends as well because we can all benefit from each other's work. We don't have to reinvent the wheel every time when we want to do something. So, that's really exciting. From an IT director's perspective, technology-wise, basic things have been satisfied. It's so amazing that we have 24/7, 365 days support. It's a stable, reliable, secure platform for our business. And then on top of that, the technology is updated continuously. So, we get two major release updates every year. So, basically what that means is the technology's not gonna be outdated. We're not gonna have to come back here seven years later and say, oh, we need to change the system again. It's gonna be constantly updated, and we're gonna be able to grow with the technology. So, now I'm gonna pass it to Veronica, and she's gonna talk about some of the things that went well during the project.
Okay, so, thank you, Ken. So, as Ken stated, I mean, it was a quick implementation, which, which helped with keep our costs down, essentially. And with that, I just wanted to point out that we were able to do this with very limited staff resources. The board had helped, you know, bring on some limited term in some positions. But in general, most of our current staff is what, who took on this, you know, project on top of their own work. And so, a 14-month implementation, as he stated, compared to our six-to-seven year with the previous system was really impressive. Also, every payroll has been done on time. We have not paid our employees late as far as general, you know, payroll processing goes, so that's a win. All employees are now entering their own time, I think, for liability reasons and for employees to be able to have that kind of control over their own time sheets. On the last slide, you know, the ability that they can now, if they choose, use the app on their phone to enter time, same for managers and supervisors to approve time. I think that's a positive. And it's really helped human resources and payroll create a really good relationship between, you know, the integration between the two, since we're, you know, a little bit separated. But between benefits, between all of our absence, between vacation, sick time, and then leading into, you know, items that are negotiated, such as salary conditions that are negotiated, we're able to work together a lot easier now that we both are on the same platform and able to, you know, speak the same, same language in Workday.
So, the, the thing that was the most impressive to me about Workday, and the, the one thing I wanted when we left our old legacy system was to go paperless, wanted to digitize the paper documentation, so that people won't have to move around the, the community as much, and they can process business from their computer. And we're there. And workflow within Workday, workflow is just a technical term of no paper. And anyway, it's, it works very well in Workday. The second to last point, full transparency. In our old system, we honestly, and I hate to say it, but we didn't have very good audit capabilities in the old financial system. So, it was, it wasn't exactly easy to go back and say, who posted that thing? Who did that thing? And that's very important to my office because we need to have control so that we can validate that those numbers didn't change in a way that we didn't expect. And then the last one is a repeat of workflow, but with workflow, you don't have paper, and you don't have all of the associated supplies of, of holding that paper.
Back up. Next slide. Oh, me. Okay. So, challenges are normal and expected in a project this size. Change is difficult for people, right? So, there's a whole science to change management and, you know, peoples, what people are used to. And so, that was one of our challenges and still is one of our challenges for all of us, for me getting used to the system, for my staff getting used to, right, new, new processes. But again, it's, it's normal. It's expected. Implementation was delayed a little. I think that was a very smart decision on the county's part, and, but again, a challenge that we faced. Payroll, we did have some challenges in aligning our MOU with past practices, right? So, when we implemented, we followed the MOU, and that, and we were able to find, maybe that wasn't always what the past practice, or sometimes MOUs are vague in a sense. So, right, then you fall back onto past practice and what that is. So, we've really been able to use this to clean up our processes, clean up our language and our MOUs. And we brought a few of those before your board, and we'll have some more cleanup ones. And I think those are really just positives down the road to have that really clean-cut language that matches our payroll system. And again, going back to change is difficult, just training employees. This is one of the challenges that we've faced, and, and one we also know we want to continually try to improve. But just changing what we're used to is, is hard.
And one example of, of kind of what motivated how we approached this project is the deputies. So, when the deputies get called out to an incident, we, this was just another benefit of moving to Workday, is that they could work on things from their phone or their iPad or whatever, but they could complete their time cards. Our legacy system had none of those capabilities or features. Delays in claims processing, which I spoke about a month ago, we've largely been able to nix that down to about a week turnaround. I don't think we're always gonna be at a week, but I don't also think we're gonna go above two weeks, which for historical standards is, is fantastic. Everybody out here would be very happy with just, just having a two-week turnaround, as far as department heads. It's when you get to a month that things can become very difficult. So, the processes have been adjusted and economized so that we are hitting that plus with Sarah Eberhart Rios and, and the CIO's Office were able to make that recommendation to help us with a little bit of temporary staffing. So, anyway, I think that the claims processing is, is gonna be back to really better than it ever has been. One-time delay in closing the books. So, we're still, we've closed the books, but we're still completing a couple of the final reports for 2023, 24 fiscal year. So, we're about to be done with that, I would say, with certainty will be done by May 31st, which means we'll be, that'll be behind us, and we will, we won't have anything late anymore. And let me just step back for just a brief moment. So, speaking of the other counties, I think there's 13 that either have Workday implemented or are currently implementing. And I mentioned Butte County. So, Butte County, I talked to the Auditor Controller up there a week ago, and she was very helpful for a lot of reasons, but also she was helpful from like a psychology standpoint and trying to get us to just, just keep our eyes on the prize, and everything will, will come together. She said her first closing almost took her like out. It was so stressful, and I'm feeling that, and I felt that this year. But she said it's gonna get better, and your second close is gonna be far better. And so, we're, we're gonna be starting the second close here in a, in a couple of months, three months, and, and I have that confidence that it's gonna be a lot better. And we will not be late again. That's a one-time issue. So, I'll come back next year, once everything's filed, and, and confirm that to you. Delivered reports, they're, they're a little bit clunky. They're a little bit, so the reports that come with the system. Places like Placer County that do three-year, Nevada County three-year implementations, they have more time to customize the reports. That's something we really should have focused in a little harder on in hindsight, but such as, you know, the case with 14 months. So, anyway, the reports, though, we're getting a handle on doing them ourselves. And then, as Laura's gonna tell you, we, we got a third-party solution that knocked it out for the budget side of it.
When the county began the process of implementing the Workday budget model known as adaptive planning, county discovered that the software was not well-suited for the structure of budget development, and the legally required documents to the state of California were not readily available as and the legally required documents to the state of California were not readily available as part of the package. So while Workday ERP is a powerful, excellent product, the adaptive planning piece did not meet Sutter County's needs for budget development, reporting, or planning.
And by the way, a county that, I think it's Santa Barbara County, I was talking to her recently, Betsy, and they they aren't even doing adaptive. So in other words, the implementer is coming right after us. Workday is saying, don't implement our our product adaptive. It's really not ready. Use Sherpa. And so they're doing the same thing that we did.
Okay, so what's on the horizon? We will soon be implementing. I missed a slide? Did I skip somebody?
Yeah, that's me. So expanded engagement. One thing that I am working on myself in my department, not not these folks, is that we need to engage more with the special districts and with the departments. And so what we've come up with is we're going to do a regular Workday newsletter or announcement. And I'm not certain the first one, when it will be live, but I'd say within the next four weeks, we'll get our first one out and then we'll start making that recurring theme so that just it just gives folks opportunity to learn a little bit more about where we're at and then they can also inquire and and and, you know, beat it up or or ask questions or make make their concerns known. The the next point, revisiting business processes, that's that's just continual improvement. That's always going to be the case. Continued work with unions, a little bit more Veronica, but but it applies to us too. When, yeah, I don't really want to go into the past too much, but there were definitely things that weren't in the MOUs that we needed to get in the MOUs and take before you and get them approved because sometimes they were paying out even though they weren't exactly in proportion with the MOU. And so that was a bit of a cleanup and we've done that.
Additionally, we are continually enhancing both the system and its reporting capabilities with the support of Sutter County's IT team, Workday Ask an Expert, AVAP, and other county partners. Additionally, when the decision was made to replace adaptive planning, county staff interviewed four vendors and Sherpa was unanimous unanimously the choice due to the successful track record with developing budget systems that interacted with Workday data, facilitating budget development consistent with California laws and producing the state-required schedules that are submitted to the state controllers every year. Workday acknowledged that their adaptive planning software was unable to meet our requirements and they provided a credit to avoid duplicating the costs.
I'm back. Okay, so now what's on the horizon? Coming up soon, we are implementing one of our Phase Two projects that were was part of the initial project, but we knew it would be something that came after our initial go-live. And that is Workday Talent and it is a performance evaluation process. So we are no longer using paper forms to do that. So employees and managers can actually share information back and forth. Employees can then go back later and look on their Workday profile to look at some of those things. What were their goals? What were some of their areas needed for improvement? So I think this will just really help both management and staff with that transparency and being able to collaborate back and forth and get their evals and their merits on time, which is really important, obviously, to get our employees paid on time. And second that I'm going to talk about today is the enhanced training resources. And Nate kind of, you know, touched on this a little on things that that he's already started. But we'd also in HR, in conjunction with payroll, we're going to be starting little, you know, what I'm calling a how-to series, so small videos to help employees be able to, how to look this up in Workday, how to do this in Workday, kind of mini-training, training videos. And I think it'll be useful to current, you know, current staff that may already know it, but I think it'll be really useful for new staff that comes on as well so that they have those resources available to them. So we have a plethora of ideas to keep keep that training going for staff.
And I'm really excited to share this with you. Next budget season, we will be using Sherpa to accelerate the budget book creation by minimizing the manual processes and auto-generating content such as department pages and fund summaries. Our goal is to create a budget book that meets the criteria of the Government Finance Officers Association and gives the community an easy access to understanding your budget. It's also important to note that part of the Workday Success Plan subscription are tools such as the Weekly Community Highlights Newsletter, which includes Workday updates and new features that are coming soon, as well as resources such as Workday Community User Group for California local government users that provide support through shared successes. The biannual functional area reviews are meant to enhance efficiencies and foster continuous improvement.
All right. So I'm just going to wrap up by, you know, mentioning AI. You've all heard AI, it's buzzwords and artificial intelligence. What does that mean to the county? How do we actually use it? This is how we use it, right? Workday is going to be our platform for utilizing AI responsibly, ethically. It's kind of a human-centered focus and it actually is meaningful to the business. It's not just, you know, ChatGPT to auto-generate an email or something like that. It's actually using our financial data. It can do things that will support our workers, like have kind of internal audit functions, you know, continuously. It can do a lot of kind of routine data entry type tasks, very automated, in a very automated fashion, like scanning invoices and then doing that automatic data entry to like move it along the chain. It can also analyze contracts for us. So there's so many things coming up, but this is how we get to the future using this platform and their approach to using AI. So I just wanted to wrap up saying that that's coming up in the future. And then, you know, that concludes the presentation. So turn it over to the board for any questions.
Before we turn it to questions, would you guys want to introduce yourself individually and your and your roles as well? Because this is being recorded and, you know, this will be history and in the future, they're, we're going to compliment you for doing the job or blame you. So I just want to make sure they know who to.
No problem.
If you could just introduce yourselves first and then we'll.
Ken Serrano, General Services Director.
Laura Granados, Deputy County Administrator.
Veronica Baumgrenner, HR Director.
Nate Black, Auditor Controller.
Awesome. And then before we kick off for for comments, I'm sure that the board has a few questions and comments. But if we can give them a round of applause, just for, I mean, I don't think, you know, we just want to show our appreciation for the the sheer like magnitude of the project. I think a lot of people don't appreciate the amount of work that you did. And looking at our team here, I can, we can feel very proud that we have an awesome team. And I know all the others who got involved with it. But I'm I'm assuming this is our leadership team and getting it working through all the process. And you guys did an amazing job. I know there were hiccups through the process and we heard a lot about different things. And you were able to find solutions together and work through it. And so and this is a really amazing like case study, really, too, for the for the whole county and how it's done. But even more than that, you know, this is going to provide so much better like just processes for the county and so much better results, I think, at the end of the day that we're going to see out of it. And we're already seeing a lot of it as we're proceeding. So just thank you so much for that. And then with that, I'll open it up to the board for comments. Supervisor Zigmeier?
No, I just want to tell Nate, thank you very much. You know, Nate took the time to meet with me a few weeks ago and I feel really, really great. I mean, I I totally appreciate you making the time. It's, this is awesome. Things are working great. Really happy about everything.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Stevens?
Yeah, if if I could ask a question just for a little clarity of mind. What's the difference between Sherpa and Workday? Is Sherpa just a, is that a platform also?
Sure. Sherpa, so when we go back to the, let's take a look at that ERP chart. So you see the kind of the area in the pink. Sherpa fills in that budget preparation and development and the forecasting part of it. So really, it was a valiant effort from our team to make adaptive planning, try to make it work within the timeline. But really, Workday couldn't deliver on what we needed. So we had to go for like a more customized solution and integrate that with Workday. And it's really for the county, like the county budget, California county budget, it was really the best fit, so.
So Sherpa is basically another program. And they, Workday gave us a credit back because we had to go outside and purchase another. Did we come out all right on that deal?
Yeah, yeah, we we've, we we had all our money refunded for that piece and we had the implementation costs refunded as well. And now we're on with Sherpa for the next five years. We'll see what in five years, what what happens, but we are made whole by Workday and they were very cooperative with us.
And Workday works very well with Sherpa and it talks to each other?
Yeah, that's correct. They're they're very tightly integrated. So it's really, it's a really a great solution for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Overnight, every night, Sherpa pulls the Workday data so that you can run a report in Sherpa the next day and you have, you know, contemporaneous information or or up-to-date information.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Baines?
Thank you for not taking an hour. It's a great presentation. I just want to thank you all so much. I mean, this is, obviously, your guys' hard work has really paid off, so thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Boone?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks. I know that we've been going through a few problems along the way and and we had Sarah jump in there and and mix things up a little bit. Sometimes it's nice to think outside the box and have that other perspective to come in and make everything kind of work out. So but thank you all, you're top-notch people. I'm glad that you're on Sutter County's board when it comes to taking care of all this. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes.
If I may, I also wanted to recognize one of the people that did a ton of the work and biggest lift was Nicole Croner with IT. And then.
Good man. All right, Nicole.
And also the HHS Department and the Treasurer's Office. And Nick Valencia is here as well, Treasurer, Tax Collector. So thanks for.
Well, give me all around the block. Great job, guys. Awesome. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Really enjoyed that. Move on now to any correspondence? Can you move on to the correspondence? And Steve, did you have any other reports? Sorry.
Oh, that's all right. Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Tomorrow is the Day of Remembrance that is put on by Victim Services to remember victims of crime. It's at 6:30 PM at our Vets Hall. And we have some of our own employees speaking there as well. And and then next week, there is a town hall for District Two and Five. You may want to mention as well at the Village Cafe, April 16th at 5:30. And then we are looking at calling a special meeting on Tuesday, April 29th for the hemp public hearing. The board had requested a further discussion of hemp cultivation, a meeting or two ago. And then also, we have our annual budget study session and we were looking at maybe having that begin at four for the hemp public hearing and then 6:00 PM for the budget study session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll move on to district reports and board consideration. We'll do them both at the same time. And we'll start with Supervisor Boone, please.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Boone. Supervisor Baines?
So I understand there might be a memorial being built in honor of of the fallen officer, Officer Osmar Redante, Redarte, sorry. And we just wish that that our board would be willing to consider some kind of monetary contribution for that memorial when it comes about. Okay. Also, I'd like to request a proclamation or resolution, whatever is appropriate, to be presented on Sunday, the Sunday, the April 13th, at the City of Dunan, at Sick Temple on Bog Road. They're having, they're celebrating Basaki and having their first annual Nagerkitten. Those are my two requests. And then I've been asked by the owners of the cheesesteak shop to invite everybody that's still left in the chambers to come by at 5:30. They're having their ribbon cutting ceremony right here off of off of Stabler. I guess a couple of doors down from from Jamba Juice. So that's tonight at 5:30 and they've asked me to extend the invitation to everybody that's in the chambers to join them for that.
I heard the cheesecakes like, or the cheesesteak is amazing, so.
I say cheesesteak.
You said cheesesteak. You just said the right thing. I said the wrong thing. The cheesesteak is amazing, so together. Okay, Supervisor Zigmeier?
Closing memory of Betty Tarky, longtime resident of Meridian. Tarky family did a lot for the community of Meridian and Sutter. Also, closing memory of Ronnie Emerson of Uba City. And David Baker, you probably met David Baker at one of the stand-down dinners. He's a fellow veteran here in the area who passed away succumb to his cancer. Great guy. I mean, there to the bitter end, helping out the veterans in the area. So I'd like to close the memory of him. And then I'd like to piggyback off of Supervisor Baines, if we could purchase a brick we talked about over there at the museum for Officer Redante. And then I'd like to, so I had the had the chance to participate at the Riverbend Career Day on Tuesday. It was an amazing event. It was really awesome. This was the best year ever. Last year was seventh and eighth graders. This year it was sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Jennifer Coats, who puts that on, is a therapist there. I stationed at that school right now. She does an amazing job. There's so many people there. It was incredible. And every kid, I mean, we're talking from a flight attendant. They've had pilots before, farmers, every walk of life was there. I was there talking about government and so forth. And but it was great, great group of kids. I'd like to put a plaque together for Jennifer Coats and, you know, she put this thing on. I wish there was more people out in the area that did stuff like this at these different schools because if they asked, people would show up. You know, it just takes a few hours out of your day, literally from 1:00 till 2:50. And you get to go and encourage some of these kids to the different aspects of life. It's not just college. You know, there's a lot of careers you can do other than, you know, if you're not built for school or if you're built for school, you know, from accounting to running for office, whether it be a supervisor, an assessor, a treasurer or something, you know. So it was really neat. So like I said, I'd like to do a plaque for her. And that would be it for me.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Stevens?
Yeah, it was brought to my attentioner, attention that Eleanor Michaels passed away on March 19th, 2025. She was 96. She loved gardening and volunteering for her community. She was Secretary of the South Sutter Recreational Association, Nicholas Cemetery for over 20 years. She was an active volunteer in South Sutter Senior Citizen, Markham Mothers' Parents Club. So just an incredible individual. So I'd like to close in her memory also.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stevens. Any other comments on that? Supervisor Stevens? That's it? Oh, I guess he's good. Okay, great, thank you. Just first of all, just a heartfelt thank you to the community from the city of Marysville. I mean, I'm going to do it no justice compared to what's done, been done over the last few couple of weeks. But I know, all of you know that I work there as a as my job and it's a small family of people. I mean, it's very small. There's 60 employees in the city of Marysville and the police department's only 20-something. So, you know, we lost a brother and a friend. Officer Redarte was an amazing kid. I call him. He used to come into the office and he'd do his two thumbs up and smile all the time. And it was just a great kid. We're just going to miss him. The outpouring of community of support has just been incredible. I mean, there's no other words for it. People have shown up left and right to support the family, to support each other, you know. I was there the day that it occurred and just being in the middle of the officers as, you know, you have big officer guys, you know, they're crying together and holding each other and praying. And, you know, it was just a really profound moments. And so I just really just that strong heartfelt welcome to this whole community. Many of you have been, went to the services and were in the procession and, you know, just thousands of people all the way down to to Roseville. And it was just an incredible outpouring of support. And I want to thank you for that. And it was just an incredible outpouring of support and I want to thank you for that. You know, Marysville is going to persevere and the whole community will as well. But it's so awesome to live in this community, to know that people get together when we have to, to support each other. And so that's why I'm always honored to serve in this position because this is like an extended family in everything we do and it really shows up when it's time to show up. So it's, it's, it's just great to be a part of it. Oh, thank you. And then I also would like to close in memory of Aurora Vigran, who's a mom of Juan Vigran, who's a radio personality in this area. So I'd like to send her, or send a letter of condolence to the family. And then I have some good news. The Uba Sutter High Wheelers are, it's the new baseball team coming to the Uba Sutter area. And I'm going to tell you guys, this, these guys are amazing. If you get a chance, go down to Bryant Field and they have a new lights, they have new padding, they have, they're building new dugouts and new, you know, all, all kinds of new things. But one thing I do want to announce because it's from my district here for sure is that from the heart of Sutter County, the Second District, the beer is going to be provided. So the Sutter Boots Brewery will be the brewery of choice for the Uba Sutter High Wheelers and their first game is on May 20th. So the first pitch will be shown out, thrown out by Jim Stassi and we're looking forward to him throwing the first pitch out. And we're, I'm looking forward to tipping a few beers with you guys from Sutter Boots Brewery from the heart of Sutter County, the Second District. So they're actually going to do their own name too. It's going to be a High Wheelers beer branded can. So excited to, excited to see that come. And then last but not least, Steve mentioned the Town Hall. So Supervisor Stevens and I are sponsoring a Town Hall. We have some very special guest stars who are going to be speaking at the Town Hall. At this point, we have CIO Steve Smith and we have Sarah Eberhart Rios who will be speaking. So if you want to see, hear some amazing speakers, don't come for Supervisor Stevens and I, come to watch them. And we look forward to having an update from the county and, and seeing what's going on. And we've had a really good response. And that's going to be at the Village Cafe in the heart of Sutter County, the Second District, at the Village Cafe on Clark Avenue. Okay? And that's on, what did we say? The 16th at, or no, the, yeah. Yeah, the 16th. Thank you. 16th at 5:30. It's your event too, about 5:30. So anyway, that's all I've got for today. Sorry for, to keep going. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We'll just do a roll call vote.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigmeier?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines? Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.